Okay, this time we'll call the meeting to order and we'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum of the board.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
All members of the board are here, thank you for that. We do have the approval of our agenda, I understand we've got a couple of modifications to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to first make a motion that we amend the agenda to add an action item to amend the Board of Commissioners' minutes from July the 14th. And I would also, in the same motion, like to remove from the agenda, under new business, old business, I'm sorry, as per a letter from Robert Hannah, attorney, the request for the rezone on Arnold Road in Rock Spring, Georgia.
Okay, so we do have a written request from attorney representing the gentleman that had the rezone for the BLH Enterprise Incorporated there, it's under our old business. Mr. Hannah represents Mr. Houston, it says their desire is to withdraw the request to rezon the above referred property and to remove from the agenda. So they are requesting this to be removed from the agenda. So we do have a motion by Commissioner Askew to remove that from the agenda and also to amend the agenda under new business for modification and approval for amended minutes from the July 14, 2022 meeting. So do we have a second to that motion?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, our agenda is approved with the amendments. Okay, we do have in the packet the minutes from our last meeting that was held here on July the 28th. Those are part of the packet. And do we have any questions or concerns with those minutes from the board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to present those minutes that have been presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Okay, this time under our informational time, we do have our district attorney here tonight, Mr. Chris Hart, we would like him to come forward and he would like to share some things about the district attorney's office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for listening to me. Of course, the board's presenting their proposed budget tonight, and I know a lot of times the citizens get upset when the spending goes up, and so part of that reason is part of my request, I wanted to explain why and the reasons we asked for what we asked for in there. Our office is a little bit differently funded than any of the other county offices, we're partially funded by the state and partially funded by the four counties of the circuit, which in addition to Mark, are two such two-day can. And all of my employees are in the state retirement plan. That's part of where our request to increase goes, is the state employees retirement system of Georgia, and June told us they were dramatically increasing the employer costs to the tune of about $64,000 to $68,000 across the four counties, so that is part of our budget request. In addition, we've always followed the state pay scales that are set by the prosecutor's counsel for all of our positions. Last year, the state raised those by $5,000 across the board. And we've always followed those in good years and in bad. For example, back in 2008, 2009, the state furloughed employees. The counties were not doing that, but we furloughed our county employees just like our state was, and we've always followed those scales. This year, I'm asking, will the state's given that rate, will we match that? Part of the reason is as well, we have basically two classes of employees in the same office doing the exact same job but making drastically different money. And then our last section is that the benefits have gone up a good bit. And so we've, and some of that may come down a little, we've had to project, we've got an open spot, we have to project the highest cost, it's a D, not another thing we're going to hire. And so, as we've got some new employees coming on this month, instead of projecting everybody at family coverage, it's kind of expensive, and if they don't take the family, that will save you some money on that. But those are the main areas that are the increase that we've got. Our office, most of our expense is personnel and benefits, it averages between 94% and 97% of our budget in any given year is personnel costs, because what we do is basically all people-based. And we're having, not just our office, but all prosecutor offices across the state are facing a historically shortage in ADAs, especially getting attorneys in. We've been running four short now for over a year, which is about 25%. Statewide, it's about 5%, but we were short four, about 25% of our attorney staff for quite some time. This month, I've got three coming in, starting at two fresh out of law school and one young lady who's worked a couple of years down near Atlanta, and she, her husband's got a job in Chattanooga, and so we were lucky enough to lure her in here and not lose her with some of the surrounding circuits. So we're getting a better spot, we've had to do some inventive recruiting to get folks to come here and get them on board and competing with other offices, because we're pretty much in competition with every other DA's office across the state and our surrounding counties as well. We think we've got, that our circuit's got a lot to offer, folks that enjoy the outdoors and a good community to live in and raise your kids. And so we think we've got a lot to offer, if we can get them to come up here and get them trained, and we can get them paid decently, then we think that we can get them to stay. And I thank the commission for giving consideration to my request. Thank you.
Questions of the board? Chris? Thank you for the information.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you for the question. Okay, now this time is our time of our public comment, we ask anyone that would like to speak that they limit their comments to five minutes, we do have a clock that we set, just in fairness to everybody, and we do ask you to come up and state your name. So is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment tonight?
Okay. Somebody else has, I mean.
Okay.
I've had a health emergency, so it's hard to keep breathing, so I may need one more minute if I have to stop and breathe. My name's Janice Williams. I'm really here to just ask why everything is being made so difficult for our citizens within Walker County. We had a tornado, and our shelter resources went to another county to help their animals, and we had no help for our citizens even though it's in our emergency plan. We didn't have any help for people that lost their home and needed to do something with their animals. And when it was brought up, Commissioner Whitfield, you said, "We helped our neighbors," but it's about our citizens first, because these are services that we're paying for. We've had a citizen, and this is just a single example, that adopted an animal from the shelter and paid an $80, I'm going to have to rest a little bit, paid an $80 adoption fee, and the animal's very full of parasites, and she covered that vet bill, but when she asked about it, the county records show zero adoption fee, and she has the receipt showing that she paid $80 for it, and when she asked about it, she was personally attacked. And the personal attacks happen, that's not up for discussion. When the shelter was shut down by the Department of Ag, you went public into the media saying that you were refurbishing the shelter, but you didn't say that our shelter was shut down for the horrible violations that were happening there. You said you were refurbishing it, and you did that, but the refurbishment has been a very nice front office, new walls, everything is nice, but the ventilation issue wasn't addressed. And because of the ventilation, we had to stop intake because we had kennel cough, and we have that because we have poor ventilation. And I don't know why the focus was put on making the office look pretty, but that's still a risk to the health of the animals, because it's about the animals. Our county did not return a disabled person's dog because, per the FOIA request, she does not make enough money to own a dog. And it was asked through FOIA, what is the bare minimum that someone is required to make to own a pet in Walker County? And the response through FOIA was, "It's at the shelter director's discretion." The citizen who was disabled, I was contacted by her case manager to help her with her pets, because that's what we do. She had had her dog for 13 years, and instead of, "Our shelter is full, keep your dogs at home," this dog had a home for 13 years, but our county chose not to let her have that dog back. And when it was finally determined where her dog was sent to, in New York, they were upset and said she shouldn't get it back because it was covered with fleas when they got it. But her dog had been in our shelter for 30 days before it went to New York, so it was not her issue that the dog was covered in fleas when it arrived in New York. When, um, hold on, sorry, okay, that's that one. And her second dog was sent to a rescue in Pennsylvania, and they were, they were very nice about it and were willing to return it, but it had already been up there for a month now, when the shelter was still telling her that they still had it at the shelter. But both dogs were sent to rescue as strays, and they weren't strays. On the presentation by the shelter, no one locally spoke. Everybody was from other counties away because, well, let me back up. So that made that difficult for a Walker County citizen, a disabled citizen who had help in place. When the presentation was made by the shelter, no one spoke. It was all people from other counties far away from us, but no citizens, because our county will not work with the citizens in Walker County, they just won't, and they make it difficult on the citizens in Walker County. And that does include law enforcement. And law enforcement respectfully won't speak up or come forward and say anything when they're struggling with animal control, because that's out of respect. But I invited them to come and speak and sing the praises of their experiences with animal control, and I don't think anybody's here. We had a senior citizen on a limited income that reached out for help feeding her animal, and the only response was, "We don't do that." And you know, they all know, that a local organization helps our senior citizens to be able to keep their pets at home. But rather than referring them to someone that can help them, a citizen in our county, you all refuse. And it's the same with low-cost spay and neuter. So I was contacted by the area agency on aging on behalf of this senior citizen to try to get her some help, and we did, she was using her food stamps to pay her pet. When she calls our county, and you know there are resources to help particularly an 85-year-old woman, why will you not tell them there are resources? This is our county, we have organizations to help our citizens, but it seems to be a personal thing, and you just absolutely refuse. And if she could walk, she's within-
Your time's been up for several, several seconds here.
Okay, can you tell me then, don't say your time's up, I'm asking you a question. Will you please tell me if you will start making things easier for your citizens and share when there are resources available to them, and make them the priority instead of outside counties?
Absolutely, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else tonight like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to our agenda then. Okay, under old business, we do have the appeal of variance request for Craig DeVallis for property located at 527 and-
Antigua.
Antigua, thank you, I struggled with both of those. Dream Drive Lookout Mountain, Tax Map Impartial 0-006-021, request was previously tabled by the Board of Commissioners at our last meeting on July the 28th, 2022. So what is the board's pleasure on this old item of our own?
Mr. Chairman, after talking with our attorney, David Gottlieb, and hearing Mr. Wilmack's presentation last two weeks ago, I recommend that we approve this variance for Mr. DeVallis.
Okay, we do have a motion from Commissioner Hart for approval of this variance request. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, your variance has been approved. Thank you all. Okay, under our new business, we're going to go to this item that we had earlier of the amendment of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, and we will also, this is about a page and a half, we will update this on the county website in the packet information, but the Walker County Board of Commissioners Board held their regular scheduled meeting on July 14, 2022. July, the board approved the minutes of the July 14, 2022 meeting at the regular scheduled board meeting, it was held on July the 28th. There was a following inadvertent material omission for the minutes of the July 14, 2022 minutes, so there's about three paragraphs here that would be added to those minutes just to capture that information in the record. It was on our video, it's recorded, so we was able to go back and capture that exact verbiage and get that added back to the minutes. So any, any further discussion, comment, issues, concerns on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve this amendment to the minutes of the July 14th meeting, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved as presented. Okay. Okay, this next proclamation, and the board's made a couple of other resolutions in the past, but there's still ongoing concern about our local hospital being CHI Memorial, they're still attempting to build a new facility up in Fort Oathork on Battlefield Parkway, and Park Ridge Medical Systems has yet filed another appeal trying to stop or slow down our local community getting a new state-of-the-art hospital. And so we've been asked if we would have this proclamation to show further support of our local hospital. Proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, access to care, whereas Walker County Government supports a new replacement hospital to serve our residents, and whereas CHI Memorial has committed to bring access to quality care to the citizens of Northwest Georgia by building a $120 million state-of-the-art replacement hospital, and whereas the state of Georgia issued a certificate of need to CHI Memorial acknowledging Catoosa, Dade, and Walker County residents need and deserve a replacement hospital. And whereas Park Ridge Health System, a Tennessee-based, for-profit operator of healthcare facilities, has filed an appeal denying access to care for Georgians. And whereas a replacement hospital is necessary for improved health outcomes and quality of life, considering access to care and increased economic prosperity for the region, whereas Walker County Government encourages Park Ridge Health System to withdraw its appeal before the state of Georgia and allow Georgia residents access to quality care that they need and deserve. I, Chairman Shannon Kate Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby request that Park Ridge Health Systems honor the wishes of this body, which is duly elected to represent the citizens of Walker County, and exponentially end this appeal, which would regard as disruptive and not in the best interest of the health and well-being of the residents. Signed and sealed 11th day of August 2022. I've gone and personally have met with the CEO of Park Ridge, got an appointment with him, very nice individual, had a good conversation, and he admitted to me in that meeting that they know they cannot stop this, but they have the ability to delay this for maybe it's up to seven years. And that's just not good for our community. They know a hospital will eventually be built, but if they delay construction for up to seven years, then it's going to take probably two years to build it. So we're talking about another hospital denying access to care for all of us to have a state-of-the-art facility by playing a political game with your healthcare. And so we just wanted to come as representatives of our community and let people know that we need to stand together and request and ask Park Ridge to stand down from their opposition. The state has issued the CON, they see that there is a need, it meets the state requirements, and now we're just playing the unfortunate political healthcare game as we all sit back and wait. And by the stroke of the pen, the CEO of Park Ridge could stop all of this today if they would just withdraw their appeal so we can get a new state-of-the-art hospital. Okay, tonight we have the, the release and the submission of our budget, the budget is also available on our website in both in a detailed format and also in a summary, and this was put out as a, as a notice of this for, that we would be releasing this today. We also have a public notice that there will also be a, this is a second public hearing of the proposed FY 2023 budget of the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, originally scheduled for Thursday, September the 8th, 2022, has been rescheduled. The public hearing will not take place until Thursday, September the 22nd, at 7:00 PM at Walker County Courthouse Annex III, 201 South Main Street in Lafette. A copy of the proposed budget is available for public view at the Board of Commissioners' office and an online at walkercountyga.gov in the government section. So we do have this budget here, I do have some additional things I would just want to talk about with this, just give some overview. The proposed FY 2023 general fund budget is in the amount of $31,537,788. This is a $2,194,262 increase, or 7.48% over our FY 2022 budget that we currently operate under today. To kind of break that out, the proposed increase in, in total personnel cost for the general fund is $1,944,790. Therefore, the increase in operational line items represents $249,572 for the budget increase for the total general fund being that $2,194,000. So in summary, 88.63% of the proposed budget increase is personnel-related cost, and as you heard our district attorney speak earlier, that's something that's driving his budget and all other county budgets that we have, is the pressure on personnel cost and increase in wages and also benefits and insurance costs. But we take a look, and this shows the breakout all the way back to 2018, I just looked at some numbers earlier, from 2018 through the FY 23 proposed general fund budget, it has increased a total in this time period of six years by $3,745,346, or that represents a 13.47% increase over a six-year time period total. So to put that in perspective, did a little research and found that the chain inflation average is 3.3% per year between 2018 and 2022, so the total inflation amount is at 14.02. So our budget has actually been moving below the average inflation rate over the last six years. In review of the six-year tax digest, the county budget has increased $802,891 in total over six years, which is less than 5.25% increase in property taxes that we have increased. The proposed millage rate, which is always confusing, the way this has to be calculated and advertised and reported, but a proposed millage rate in the unincorporated area, we are rolling back that millage rate by 1.113 mills. So that is a rollback of over a mill, 1.113 mills. So some ask, well, what would it take to do a full rollback where you're revenue-neutral as a government? A full rollback would be at 6.752 mills. So that's a difference of .448 mills, so 44 basis points of a mill that we're from, from being a full rollback. And so we are looking at how much property valuations have gone up, and the average property evaluation has gone up in our county this past year, they tell us around 25%. And so this represents that rollback to offset that inflationary factor of increase in property values. And so we are advertising a property tax increase because it's not a full rollback, but we're within less than a half of a mill of being a full rollback. So our proposed millage rate in the incorporated area, within the city limits, is a rollback, it's a little higher rollback, it's 1.67 mills, and a full rollback there would be 9.9 mills. So the proposed 10.293 mills represents the rollback, to do a full rollback would be .393. So we're less than 40 basis points of a full, complete, revenue-neutral rollback. But this budget that is proposed does include some new requested positions in the budget, it also includes an additional 80 cents per hour pay increase for all of our county employees, because everyone's feeling the pressures of increased cost. This board authorized back in April a $1.20 raise increase, so that gets absorbed into any new budgets going forward. So this would give our employees of Walker County a total raise of, that's being proposed to this board, of $2 total within a short period of time. And this is also going to help us be more competitive in the marketplace, because we likewise, and all of our departments, even our other elected officials, are all struggling to keep, maintain and hire employees due to wage pressure, where there being a limited workforce availability. So we'll be talking more about this budget, we'll put some of these notes and information on our website, I know there's a lot of information here to absorb, but the detailed budget may be more than you want to understand and absorb, but there's also the summary budget as well that people can look at, that may be a little easier to just get a snapshot view of that. So again, we'll be talking more, and also, we did have to reschedule our millage rate hearings, we submitted the information to the, to the messenger as we are required to do, we made the proper request, the lady here at the local office sent up the proper information, by the time it got down to the printing press, they altered the size of the, the ad, they saw they could make the ad a little smaller, probably hopefully to maybe save us a few dollars, but that backfired on us, because it has to be 30 square inches of some view, has to be 30 square inches. We were two and a half square inches shy of that, so we're having to start that process over. So that's also being advertised in the paper again, we will have three public hearings for that, and one of those are scheduled in the morning, and so that information will be also mailed out in our e-newsletter and be sent out to the, or it's already been sent out to the media, and you'll see that also in the local paper of those times and dates for that.
When you said in the morning, not tomorrow morning?
Yeah, exactly, not tomorrow morning.
That's the way it sounded.
I think that first morning one is August 25th, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, August 25th at 8 o'clock at the Walker County Civic Center, and then we'll be back here August 25th at- be back here August 25th at 6:30. So that's 30 minutes prior to this next meeting that we would have on August 25th. And then the final meeting is September 1st, will be the final hearing and the board to adopt and set the millage rate for the new tax year. So August 25th and 8:00 AM at the Civic Center is the first meeting. So good catch, yes. I don't want to confuse anybody.
And just... So we're upfront, so the one September meeting will take place of the eighth September meeting, correct?
Yes.
So it'll be a week early with that.
Yeah, we're going to be a week early with our September meeting and our scheduling. So typically, we meet the second and fourth Thursday of each month. In September, we will meet the first Thursday being September 1st, and then the fourth Thursday. We had some scheduling that we needed to work out to accommodate, and so we will meet September the 1st and then the fourth Thursday in September as well. Good, good points.
I'm just trying to make sure I don't get it wrong.
No, thank you for that. That's a lot of moving parts there.
I know, yes, sir.
Very good. Okay. So in this budget, we do have the general fund budget, and then also we're submitting tonight for the public. We have the enterprise funds and special revenue budgets. Your enterprise funds are things that generate revenue, so that's going to be our 911 center, our...
Mountain Cove and the landfill.
Okay, Mountain Cove and the landfill, and then the other special revenue funds is going to be the 911 center and the fire department. And then other grants that we take in is in that part. So there's actually two budgets that we're supposed to have for county government. You've got the general fund budget and then the enterprise and special revenue budgets. And so make sure you look at both of those. Okay, we do have a Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Subgrant Award, project name juvenile justice incentive grant, subgrant Y23-8-025, federal funds in the amount of $172,541, matching funds zero. The grant period is from July 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. So would you like to come speak?
Well, we can.
Come on up, sir, everybody can see you and hear you good.
Good evening. We came here last year, and this will be our ninth year of directing this grant. It is a reimbursement grant, so there's really no out-of-cost pocket to the taxpayers of Walker County. We run two programs. One is called Thinking for a Change. Thinking for a Change is a program where we teach youth social skills, problem-solving skills, and cognitive self-change. The idea being that if we can change the way these juveniles think, we can try to help them control their behavior. So that's it in a nutshell for that program.
Let me interrupt. This is Dodd Werly, I should have properly introduced you. This is Dodd Werly.
Yes, sir.
But I cannot remember your partners.
Vic Burgess.
Vic Burgess, yes. Okay, good.
And Vic Burgess is my right-hand man. He basically runs our connections program, I'll let him talk a little bit about that if you want to let them know what that's all about.
I work with the youth outside of class, and we work on whatever their probation order is. There are of course the high-risk kids that are at risk of getting sent to some kind of community outside of the community replacement treatment center, which the end goal is to keep them out of there and to help them be successful in the community, either a treatment center or RYDC, which is basically jail for youth. I work with them on their court orders, I work with the families, help them break down barriers. A lot of these kids are involved in multiple agencies, they're involved with mental health, they're involved with Department of Family Services, so I help the family advocate for them within all those services. Because they can, it can get pretty confusing when you've got six or seven workers, so I kind of like the coach, and we get everybody together in a team to work towards the same goal with the youth. Work on employment if they're old enough. A lot of the youth are kind of schools, not traditional schools, not optima, so I help them get their GED. We use the Youth Success Academy, of course, y'all know that's a great program, so I always encourage that if they are able to do that. We advocate with the school system. We also help with community service, if they've got community service, we help find that and supervise that as well. So just really, we get with the family and find out what their needs are, and based on their strengths, we help the family try to solve their problems.
So Dodd, is this starting your ninth year or starting your 10th year with this grant?
I don't know. I think this is not even... You know, the fiscal year runs from July to June, and so I think we started in '14. I think we started in '14.
Yeah, this is your ninth year, and this is the 10th year the county's had.
So I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the county serving as the fiscal agent all these years for this program, and we would ask that y'all continue that for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so we do have this grant request, again, it's for $172,541. These are federal dollars that support this 100%. There's no matching funds. Our contribution is managing the grant and dealing with Dodd. I mean, no, did you come out right?
Well, I have to deal with Mr. McConnell and Becky and others.
Dodd's been great to work with, he's always super spot-on with his documents and his reimbursement requests and all, so it's been a good relationship for our county, and y'all contribute a lot to our youth and our community.
Thank you very much, and I agree with all that, and the county's been wonderful. Just really, I really appreciate it.
So we need a motion to approve this grant.
Motion to approve the grant.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion or questions that the board would have?
I did just have one question, sir. So basically, how big would you say your caseload is or the number of youth that you serve?
Okay, that's a great question. And I forgot to mention, this is not just for Walker County, it's for Walker, Dade, Chautauqua, and Katusa. So we may have 50 youth at any one time, sometimes less than that, probably not much more than that at any given time, but they're rolling in and out too. And so as we're providing the services, we just want to make sure that they're ready to be on their own, and when they are, we let them go. Vic will usually follow up with them with a little bit of aftercare services, but yeah, I would say about 35 to 50 on average at any given time.
Appreciate the work you guys did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the grant acceptance is approved.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir. A lot of places there for me to initiate, and we'll do that after the... We have a Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2022 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance, the JAG Grant Program, local solicitation for $19,064 to purchase technology, equipment, enhancement, and for proper officer safety. This is a grant that the sheriff's office does get most years. Was there anyone here that wanted to speak on this tonight or not? Okay, I didn't know if you were here for that or not.
I'm here for issue, but...
No, that's fine if you...
I don't have a burglary paperwork in front of me, but I'm happy to tell it's a benefit to the sheriff's office.
Yeah, so this is $19,064, and they have an equipment list here that they're wanting to invest this money in. So this is the personnel of Walker County Sheriff's Office who will be utilizing this equipment are currently assigned to different divisions within the Walker County Sheriff's Office. Department is unable to purchase the listed equipment and supplies at this time due to budget shortfalls. The existing personnel safety will increase by the addition of the equipment, as well as provide additional resources for our body worn camera program. This type of equipment and supplies are as follows, and there's a list of some equipment that totals this $19,064. So this is federal funds. To my knowledge, there's not a match on this, this is just for us to accept and manage these funds and verify the purchase of these receipts.
Make a motion if we accept the management of the funds.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the grant is approved. Okay, we do have a purchase order for 2022-1973 to Prater Ford for the purchase of one 2023 Ford F-150 in the amount of $47,441.76 for the Walker County Fire Department for funding source of our ARPA funds. So Chief Hodge.
Good evening, thank you. So historically, it would be before you, within the same year, we're going to take ownership of the vehicle, but two and a half weeks ago, we were notified by Prater Ford that Ford was going to cut off any F-150 orders as of the 12th, which is tomorrow. So this purchase order will be via email, be arriving at Prater Ford tomorrow, so... But they're telling us that we'll be lucky to have it 12 to 14 months from now. So this is being, this is a part of our annual vehicle replacement program, and it's coming out from the American Rescue Plan Act, but it's just they're cutting off orders earlier and earlier and earlier, and it's taking longer for production.
So in that case, we just earmarked this money in the budget or in the...
Yeah, it would be, in the ARPA funds.
And give the truck a...
Yeah, exactly. So we're just budgeting these funds and also giving this purchase order because Ford, they're telling us Ford has gotten so tight on these purchases that the dealers on government sales, they're having to submit the actual government purchase order with their order to validate that it actually is sold because they had some dealers trying to maneuver, and so Ford's just so limited on the production capacity and to make sure that they're meeting these government needs, they're requiring signed purchase orders. Like Chief Hodge says, we just got this information a few days ago, and they've got to have this purchase order in the AM tomorrow, or we're going to be, you know, another year plus before we'd have an opportunity to get a truck.
Historically, I'm making the request in March and April for October delivery, and it's totally changed now, so...
Right, any other questions for the chief?
Nope.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve this purchase order to Prater Ford in the amount of $47,441.76.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the order is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we do have our department statistics here in our packet today. We did take in 77 animals into our shelter, or 77 dogs and 37 cats. They turned out 92 dogs and 29 cats. We do now have this supplemental report in our packet now that's called the Best Friends Data Metric. Best Friends is an organization that we report to and share information with, and so we wanted to start sharing this report here publicly each month, so it shows inventory levels based off of age, gets into more of the detail of the live outcome rates and returns and transfers and animals that do die in care, spay and neuter's and different things. There's a lot of additional information there in that report that we're attaching now. Our code enforcement did 309 properties they found in compliance that they were able to document. There was 40 citations written or violations and closed out 30 cases. Our roadside trash pickup was 2,600 pounds for the month. Our elections office tells us in July there was 267 voters registered in Georgia, in Walker County for the Georgia election. Fire department responded to 507 calls for service that was handled by 753 responding units, installed 14 smoke alarms. Mountain Cove Farms was still busy even in a hot month of July with 42 nights stayed at the cabins. New home construction, there's six new permits pulled in the unincorporated area of Walker County in the month of July. Our Facebook followers, we added 62 new followers to Facebook, 39 new subscribers to our e-newsletter, and 2,290 trips on transit. So transit's running real close to about 2,300 trips each month. We had 2,304 in June and 2,290 in July, so our transit system is very, very heavily utilized, and it's a real good program for our citizens that need that. At this time on our agenda, we do have for our commissioner comments, as always, we'll start with our District One, which is Commissioner Blake Moore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out. If I can help you in any way, please call, text, or email, and I'll do the best I can to help. Thank you.
Thank you all for participating, and as Robert says, call, text, or email. Appreciate y'all being out here. Thank you.
Yep, thanks everybody for coming out. I want to publicly thank a county employee tonight for his hard work on something. Our county attorney, Mr. David Gottlieb, and I have worked together. He did most of the work, I just listened, but on the issues at East Warren Road that we've had, and he spent a lot of time and effort into that, so personally, I want to thank you for all you did there. Appreciate your efforts, and I know it was a lot of time. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I want to just say thank you to all of our county employees for your service, your hard work. Appreciate what y'all do. Mr. Chair, I would like to yield a few of my moments to Mr. David Brown to kind of get us updated on some of the safety equipment that has been purchased for our employees.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell him if she can hear me. Talk more, maybe turn it down. Is that better? Okay. Okay, we have handouts again, gentlemen.
It shows the vendors, what the items were. Everything that's in the yellow has been purchased and delivered to the departments so far. Shows the purchase orders, and then there's actually two pages of it, and the one that's in the, it's a grayish purple color, they are on order and they will be delivered. I talked to Pat Cook, his thermal imagers are supposed to be shipped either tomorrow or Monday. They should be in next week for them, they'll get them. The fire department's got theirs, per Nathan Pharo, they've already been using them, probably teaching these new recruits how to use them and all. And the ones that are just still white, we still got to order those, but we're working on that. And also, the vendor list, I don't have them highlighted, but they did come in, and Commissioner Stoltz had asked to bring one when they came in, just for everybody to use. And we bought five of the standard and two of the various. There's five, there's seven PRVs, eight of the PRVs will have one starting in the morning. So this is basically what we bought. It's got the straps, it's got the leg straps, it's adjustable, and you've got 24 lift points. Instead of like using the sheet or the arm lift, this is something I talked to the city of Winder, and they've got it on all their trucks. And before we ordered this, was it Jacksonville, Florida? I believe it was, thank you, they ordered 100. So they are really, but this should help on our backend with the fire department because those guys work 24, 365 days a year.
Good, good list. Okay, Pat, do you want to come speak, sir?
Sorry, I don't have that else. Thank you for your time. The Sheriff's Department greatly appreciates the board voting to use some of the returned monies to purchase these thermal imagers. I was asked to come and kind of explain how it would benefit law enforcement. I was asked to come and kind of explain how it would benefit law enforcement. Obviously, we're a rural county. The sheriff's department bears the brunt of law enforcement responsibilities for this county. We are an oddity. We are not a large metropolitan area, therefore, the majority of our population live in the county, which puts that burden upon the sheriff's office. And having the rural areas that we do, our guys find themselves in positions where they're in low-lit areas, especially our night shift personnel, especially the ones that work the south end. And what we asked for with these thermal imagers, they work off of heat. Any of us that watched television over the last 20 years have watched thermal imaging from gun cameras from aircraft in the Middle East, and we've all seen white-hot and black-hot. These are some improved versions. These actually give us a colored picture. The plus of these, the 10 smaller units that we purchased are going directly to our patrol personnel and our K-9 handlers. Most people would not be aware of what the sheriff's department deals with because thankfully, we live in an area where people have a unrealistic view, but it's Mayberry, and it is not. The sheriff's department runs an average of 50,000 calls a year, and we run some pretty dangerous ones. We spend a lot of time tracking fugitives because we are the officer of the sheriff. We serve warrants. We're the ones that get called to hunt folks down. So this will give them an advantage for officer safety when they're operating in areas where visibility is limited, where light is limited. Our dog handlers, you know, it's not well-publicized, but they've had some pretty close calls on dog tracks, hunting some pretty dangerous people. And this gives them the ability to scan for heat signatures where light is not necessary. It doesn't give away their position because they're not illuminating an area. This hunts heat signatures. These are some pretty technologically advanced pieces of equipment. They work also as a camera. They run an SD card, so you can record the thermal imaging. They have Bluetooth and Wi-Fi capability. So if our personnel are carrying their Wi-Fi boxes on their bodies, they can transmit this stuff back to the sheriff's department. They can transport it to in-car computers, vehicles that are responding to them, can log into that and pick up that thermal video as they move and plus the recording issue for it. So officer safety in attempting to apprehend dangerous persons, but also because of the rural nature of where we live, we've been called many times to do search and rescue operations. We have Pigeon Mountain, we have John's Mountain, we have large amounts wooded areas. This gives us an advantage because day, night, it really doesn't matter, we're hunting a heat source. So once they get on the ground, if you'd like us to bring them back in and give you a kind of a demonstration of how a thermal engine works, I'm sure we would be happy to do that.
I would be happy to do that. Yeah. Like I said, if you're ready, come on back.
Well, again, we, we thank you. This was, had we not gotten those extra monies, the sheer cost of this would be prohibitive, especially to equip as many personnels we'll be able to equip. Our night shift supervisors will have them. Our NCO sergeants and corporals will have them in cars with them. Our dog handlers will have them. The two larger units actually will go to the SWAT team because they have a further focused issue, focus issues and wider pans of view. So we can set up on a small tripod, and they can send in our sniper teams to do our surveillance when teams are in route to go serve warrants or whatever. So it's, it's a serious technological advantage, and we greatly appreciate it. Can I answer any questions?
Wow, we're looking forward to demonstration. I'd love to see them.
Well, I am too. I'm going to have to go through the manual so I don't make myself look like a fool. But yeah, we'll, we'll bring them back to give a demonstration of how they operate.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. Last thing under our commissioner comments, just want to encourage everyone, if you don't want to print out a long copy of this budget, because the general fund budget's over 60 pages, plus the additional is probably another 20 pages or so, you can stop by the commissioner's office and get a copy of those in hard copy, if that makes it easier for you. It is on our website in a PDF, so you can download it or print it out, save it. And also, the previous years are all listed, and every budget from a previous year that we could ever find is on the website as well. I think there's about 15, 16 years worth of prior year budgets on there as well for someone to review. So at this time, executive session.
For personnel and real estate.
Real estate. So we have a motion by Commissioner Askew to go into executive session for personnel and a real estate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned for executive session, and we will return after that. Thank y'all. We just come out of our executive session. It's 8:33 still on Thursday, August the 11th. There's no further action from our executive session, so do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Excuse me. Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.